I'd like to call to order this record meeting of the Lennox Township Board Trustees, Monday, January 6, 2025, at 6:32 PM. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of meeting agenda.
Actually, I need to add letter N to the agenda. The extension to the clerk's office, please.
Is that a motion?
I make a motion to approve the agenda of January 6, 2024, with the addition of N to extend the clerk's office.
I have a motion by Clerk Gurley, supported by Trustee Rosio. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. Approval of minutes.
I'll make a motion that we approve the December 2024 minutes.
Second.
I have a motion by Trustee Moreno, supported by Clerk Gurley. May the Deputy Clerk please call? Actually, no, it's not her call. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. Public announcements. Public count. Go on, let's... All right. Moving on to consent agenda. All items listed on this consent agenda are considered routine by the Township Board. It will be enacted by one motion. According to established Township meeting rules, there will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the public or the board so requests an app prior to meeting, in which event the Chair of the meeting may remove such items from the consent agenda for discussion and consideration under Agenda Item Number Eight below. Approval of the consent agenda shall be decided by a majority roll call vote of those present and voting.
The order in bills for... From the dates 11/16 to 12/18, in the amount of $755,460.67. I have a motion to approve the consent agenda and the orders in bills in the amount of $755,460.67.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Treasurer Sutherland, supported by Trustee Rosio. May the Deputy Clerk please call the roll.
Sutherland?
Aye.
Rosio?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Moreno?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
All right, moving down, number eight, item remove consent agenda, 2023-2024 Audit Report, UHYLOP.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Karen Shafik. I'm from UHY. We were down here to do your audit, and we met with management a few weeks ago to go through your financial statements in great detail. I'm going to kind of go through it in a summarized version here for you. Just for a little bit of the layout of the report, you should all have their blue binder, if you will. The first part of the report on pages one through four is the independent auditors' report. You do have an unmodified opinion or a clean opinion, and the best that you can get, and what you strive for each year. The next part of the report is management's discussion and analysis. That goes through really a good narrative of the financial statements and some summarized financial information. And then the first set of financial statements that are included in here is the Township Y financial statements. That includes all your assets, all your liabilities, regardless of cash flow there. The way that you typically look at your funds is the fund financial statements, and so I'll give you a brief overview of your general fund there. On page 13, you have your balance sheet. At the end of June 2024, assets were at $3,962,754. Liabilities were at $546,219. Deferred inflows were at $21,498, and your fund balance was at $3,395,37. On page 16, you can see the results on the year, so your total revenues in your general fund were $1,825,375. Total expenditures were $2,487,218, and other financing sources were at $2,012,000. So your change in your fund balance this year is $1,350,157. The fund balance is split into a couple different pots. There is a portion that is non-spendable of $38,000, but the remaining, almost $3.4 million, is unassigned. There are a couple other funds. There's some special revenue funds, which are also governmental funds. Your road fund had a change in fund balance of $132,983. Your fire fund had an increase of $320,144 of fund balance. Your PTA revenue had a change in your fund balance of $883,749. And your liquor law enforcement fund had a change in fund balance of $9,590, with your monitoring fee having a change of $4,146. You can see those changes, sorry to mention what page number, but on pages 16 and on page 54 as well. There's also a debt service fund, which is a governmental fund, and that change in fund balance for the year was $1,708. There's also an enterprise fund, your water supply and sewage disposal system fund. That change in fund balance was at $912,725. And at the end of the year, there was a net working capital of $252,345. There are also a couple other reports, just some letters that are included in here. There's an independent auditors' report on internal control, as well as an audit communication letter, which are both regarding communications to the board. Is there any questions? I know I went through it really, really quickly, so... Any questions at all?
There's a lot here.
There is a lot there, yes. It's a pretty big report, so it's hard to go through it really quickly, but we need to. And I do want to thank you all for the clerk's office, treasurer's office, supervisor's office. You guys pulled a lot of stuff for us, answered a lot of questions for us, and I just want to thank you for all the time you guys spent preparing for us and answering everything when we were here.
Once we go through all this and look at it on our leisure, if we have any questions, will we call you?
Absolutely. Yes, of course.
Thank you.
Yes.
All right, there's nothing further, I think. Thank you so much once again. All right, moving on. Number 10, Item A, HVAC unit replacement proposal. Mr. Trump, I believe you asked to table this tonight?
I did. Basically, on the sheer fact of, by the time this board meeting was come, I'd only had one quote. I did not get any response from other contractors. Subsequently, I did hear back from one this afternoon, after we had spoken. So at that point, that's when I called and asked to table this. Give me another month. Hopefully, I get some more information, some more pricing, a little bit more in doubt. And I hated the feeling that I felt that this was rushed. So I just didn't table it and put it off another month if we could. Because it is a pretty extensive project. There's a lot of monkey parts to this.
Could we possibly look at the feasibility, at least, of replacing the geothermal, moving away from it?
That was something buying this time. I am going to reach out back to the gas company to see what they have in their expansion plans, or what it would take for us to go it alone. But that would also change what type of units. But I need to make that first before these guys start pricing that equipment up, because it would be different. And quickly thinking about it, looking at it, there's going to be pros and cons both ways.
There's always this.
So I will try and put together as much information as I can, and completely so we have options to consider.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion that we table this item until further information is gathered.
I second that.
I have a motion by Clerk Gurley, supported by Treasurer Sutherland. May the Deputy Clerk please call the roll.
Gurley?
Aye.
Sutherland?
Aye.
Rosio?
Aye.
Moreno?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
All right, moving on to outdoor water meter reader. That's a tongue twister. Replacement, Mr. Trump.
Okay. So roughly back in 2003, we had automated our water meter reading process. Basically, what that entailed was adding a transmitter that sends a signal that we could capture at the road with certain equipment to read all of our water meters. Basically, all these units are what would consider Generation One for the company that produced them. These units have far outlasted their life expectancy. I am starting to see, and just had quite a few of them fail. Unfortunately, it's the batteries in them that are failing, and they're not serviceable. So we're forced to change out these transmitters. So in front of you, you see I have a proposal to purchase 50 new transmitters at a cost of $7,336.50 to start the process, to start to change out, excuse me, these Generation One transmitters to the new stock.
So 30 of these have already gone bad?
The last cycle, which was just last week, I had 30 that did not read.
And you're ordering 50 for...
I ordered 50 to fulfill, but I know I have bad now, and to keep them at bay as they go bad.
Stock, stock in 20.
Correct.
Is there a... A long time for shipping of these or anything? Now that is... What I'm trying to get to is, are 20 enough?
They are in stock and available currently.
Okay.
Obviously, things go in and out of stock, but there's never been any long lead time for that particular item, like there has been for certain meters.
Okay.
Do we know what the lifetime of these new readers would be?
They're still telling me that they only expect them the last 10 to 15 years, and that's just because of what the battery is.
If there's no further discussion, a motion would be in order.
I'll make a motion that we approve the purchase of 50 water meters for the Water Department.
I'll second. Would you like to put the cost? We have to add the cost in the minutes.
Oh, okay. Purchase 50 water meters for the price of $7,336.50.
And do you still support Mr. Rosio?
Yes.
All right. I have a motion by Trustee Moreno, supported by Trustee Rosio. May the Deputy Clerk please call the roll.
Moreno?
Aye.
Rosio?
Aye.
Sutherland?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Item C, 2025 Municipal Credit and Community Credit Contract, Mr. Gray.
Good evening, Mr. Supervisor, members of the board. This evening, you have before you the Smart Municipal into the credit contract. It's really a pass-through from Smart Bus to the Township to the EMS. So it's basically a three-party agreement that provides us funding to operate the small Smart Shuttle Buses that you see operating here in our community. Those funds come from two sources, one our Act 51 funds, those are the funds we pay on gas tax. The other funds are what they call municipal credits, which are funds that come back to the community from the village that all Macomb County residents pay to Smart Bus. Those funds can only be used for the purpose of providing public transportation, and since we provide the public transportation here in Lennox Township to the small buses, really we're your only option for spending the money on at this point in time. The board still needs to approve in its minutes the transfer of those smart credits and authorize the supervisor to sign the contract for that, for the transfer of those funds. It is $5,634 in what's called municipal credits and $16,160 in community credits. The smaller number is those gas taxes I mentioned, and the larger number is the portion of your village that comes back to you. The total is $21,794. I did include for the board's information tonight that last year in Lennox Township, we transported 1,498 residents on the community transit buses, and that's pretty consistent with prior years. Unless there are any questions, I would recommend the board approve the municipal community credit contract and authorize the township supervisor to sign their path.
I'll make a motion to approve the municipal credit company, our credit community. Are we going to need the cost on this?
It's just, it's the transfer of the entire one of the funds, Mr. Moreno, which was $21,794 to Richmond Lennox EMS.
Yeah, I'm not seeing that number on our sheet here.
It's the combination.
The combination.
It's the combination.
Um, there's...
Yeah.
I'll change this motion that we accept the municipal credits in the amount, or we pay in the amount of $56,000, or $5,634, and in the amount of $1,600...
$1,600.
$1,600.
It should be $16,160.
$16,160, I'm sorry.
I second.
I have a motion by Trustee Moreno, supported by Clerk Gurley. May the Deputy Clerk please call the roll.
Moreno?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Sutherland?
Aye.
Rosio?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye. Thank you very much.
All right, moving on to Item D, Macomb County Cost Share Agreement, High Bank Creek Bridge, Mr. Gray.
Good evening, board. This evening, the supervisor's office comes forward with a request from the county through a cost share agreement. This agreement, as the supervisor stated, is in fact for Richmond Township, Lennox Township, the Department of Roads concerning the bridge for the High Bank Creek. As you see in the attachments with your packet this evening, just 25% portion for Lennox Township is going to be $111,263 for this bridge replacement. It is a 25% fractional cost for us. The county shares a 50%, Richmond Township has the other $111,000. Once again, that is 32 mile road over the High Creek Bank between Almo Road and Place Road. Currently, we do have already authorized from Richmond Township their agreement. The county is just waiting on Lennox Township, and they will be ready to move forward to beyond this year's project programs. Any questions? I'll bring it back to the board for questions or comments.
If there's no discussion, a motion would be in order.
I motion to approve the cost share agreement between Department of Roads, Richmond Township, and Lennox to replace the High Bank Creek Bridge, Lennox Township's 25% portion of $111,000. $111,263. Second.
I have a motion by Treasurer Sutherland, supported by Clerk Gurley. May the Deputy Clerk please call the roll.
Sutherland?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Moreno?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Rosio?
Aye.
All right, moving on to Item A, Comcast Commercial Upgrades, Mr. Gray.
Thank you, Supervisor Reader. This evening, coming forward from the supervisor's office, in the past, we have been working in the transitional process between the former board and this board of moving our systems from AT&amp;T to Comcast. We have several items that we're working currently, and it is now time to update the equipment within our buildings. Just so that you're aware, one of the key items is for our DPW to be able to download their water and sewer billing process, so when they pull in, the wireless internet connections will allow an automatic update for them. That also is for our fire departments, both Station One, Station Two. They'll have automatic updates that they can update through the wireless systems, that they have tough books, and so on and so forth. These wireless systems also are within the buildings here. This is new equipment to replace the older equipment that was part of AT&amp;T. This is a single-source operation. High Tech is our preferred vendor within the township, and as you will see, the attachment on this totals out inclusively at a price of $8,424.28. We are approximately 60 to 90 days from completion. 90 days right now for town hall to be switched over to Comcast. So it is with recommendation and request that we start moving forward, updating the fire stations, the DPW, and getting the rest of the buildings online with the equipment and the upgrades. We have several of the buildings that will be done within those 90 days of final connections and moving to a final disconnect. And as if you remember, that final disconnect is going to be about $15,000 savings from AT&amp;T removal. Just keep in mind, AT&amp;T is moving away from doing retail operations and strictly going to high-end corporate. So we actually fall in that retail operations of their concerns. That I'll bring it back to the board for any questions or comments.
If there's no discussion, a motion would be in order.
I'll make a motion to approve the code for High Tech in the dollar amount of $8,424.28 for the new system to be installed in the township buildings.
I second that.
I have a motion by Trustee Rosio, second by Treasurer Sutherland. May the Deputy Clerk please call the roll.
Rosio?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Moreno?
Aye.
All right, moving on to Item F, Policy Manual Amendment, Department Head Policy, Mr. Gray.
Good evening, board members. This evening, coming from the supervisor's office, there's a request to add to the Lennox Township policies and procedures. Former administration had been working at doing several different block sections. We're asking to bring these sections forward now and having things done in smaller piecemeal, so once it comes to the board, the whole thing will be completed instead of a volume. So in case there's any issues, questions, we can go through sections of this. Currently, as you'll see in front of you, Lennox Township Department Head Policy. The purpose of this policy is to establish clear guidelines regarding responsibilities and limitations of department heads within Lennox Township. As you will see, there's an attachment. Each department within Lennox Township has designated department heads responsibility operations. A department head may only hold one department head position at a time to ensure clear lines of accountability, effective leadership, and proper management within the departments. The department structures, as you clearly see, is supervisor's office, clerk's office, treasurer's office, assessing department, building department, Department of Public Works, public safety, fire department, park and rec, and the senior center. An acting department head, in the event of an department head is temporarily unavailable due to illness, vacation, temporary leave, et cetera, or the position is vacated, a qualified individual may be appointed to serve in an acting capacity. The acting department head may be a current department head or another individual deemed qualified for the role. The acting appointment will be temporarily and shall not exceed 30 days unless extended by the township supervisor or the township board. I can continue through if you'd like. There is a second page to that. The acting department head will have the authority and responsibilities of the regular department head for specific departmental that they are temporarily overseeing. Exceptions to the policy. This policy does not prevent a department head from temporarily taking on responsibilities outside of their department or serving in or in acting capacity of another department head when required. Temporary assignments must be approved by the township supervisor or the township board, and the individual retain the primary department head responsibilities during the interim period. Communication and changes. Any temporary assignment or change of department head duties, including acting appointments, must be communicated clearly to the township and to the public to ensure transparency and proper coordination. Review and compliance. The township supervisor will review and monitor compliance with this policy. Any conflicts or issues arising due to multiple departments or acting roles will be addressed promptly to ensure effective governance and management of township operations. The effective date requested, the policy shall be effective upon its passage by the township board and remain effective till amended or rescinded by the Lennox Township Board. That I'll bring it back to the board for any questions or comments.
Is there a reason that the senior center doesn't fall under the Department of Parks and Recreation?
It is a separate, in separate funds.
Okay, but does it need to be? I mean, it seems to me like you're going to have two department heads that really aren't doing that much, and I don't know if there's enough for Parks and Rec persons to...
So senior center receives certain federal funds that need to stay separated from Parks and Rec. Parks and Rec and senior center...
Yeah, but we're talking about the department heads, right?
But senior board may...
But senior coordinator does a very good job as senior coordinator. They do not want to take John Bond as Parks and Recreation Director and they are part-time official, but I believe that the two should stay separate.
I just, I don't understand, you know, why we're paying for two when one should be.
We're not paying for Luanne.
She is a volunteer.
Are we?
Luanne works for free.
I didn't know Luanne was doing this.
Oh, Luanne, the senior coordinator is, has a contract to not be, not charge us to be the senior coordinator.
That's, that's fine and dandy, but I'm not saying now, I'm saying this, this could go on for ten, twenty, thirty years from now. Okay, is there a reason why Parks and Recreation Department Head doesn't take care of the senior center? It just seems logical to me that they would.
Well, I don't follow your train of logic. I personally believe that the senior center and Parks and Recreation should be, stay, should stay separate.
If there's no further discussion, motion would be in order.
I motion to approve the policy manual amendment regarding department heads as recommended.
I have a motion by Treasurer Sutherland, seconded by trustee Rosio. May the Deputy Court please call the roll.
Sutherland.
Aye.
Rosio.
Aye.
Marino.
Aye.
Gurley.
Aye.
Reader.
Aye.
All right, moving on to item G, policy manual amendment, bereavement policy. Mr. Gravo.
Good evening, board. This evening, the township supervisor's office is bringing forward the bereavement leave policy updated with new requirements. A full-time, thirty-hour-plus week employees will be paid on the basis of the current hourly rate for absence due to the death of a family member, subject to the following conditions. In the event of a death of a spouse, child, parent, sister, brother, grandparent, grandchildren, mother-in-law, father-in-law, or a full-time employee, such employee will be granted four days of leave with pay. In the event of a death of an aunt, uncle, brother-in-law, sister-in-law, first cousin of a full-time employee, such employee will be granted one day leave with pay. Any questions? I'll bring it back to the board for any questions, comments, or discussion.
Yes, I have one question. The only change from the old policy to the new policy is that brother-in-law and sister-in-law were put in as one day leave and with pay. Am I getting that right?
Correct.
Okay. I don't know if we have any married people that work in this township. Would it be odd for them to have to explain to one person that that person gets four days off with pay and the other, their spouse does not, only gets one? I'm talking married people within our township that work for, in this township or that work for the township. What I'm getting is either, I don't see why brother-in-law and sister-in-law isn't moved to a four-day leave with pay.
Yeah, I don't think four days is even enough, but.
Are we?
Said, I don't think four days is enough for any of it, but.
It's a full work week.
Yeah, it's one week.
I mean, is this the way, you know, normal? Is this normal or?
It's normal for most places and they do not even include brother-in-law and sister-in-law. That was just something that I considered with some, an employee situation that came up and I thought it should be in there. If you have first cousin in there, a brother and sister-in-law should be in there too.
Well, yeah, I agree it should be in there. Yes, absolutely.
But based, yeah, but based on places that I've seen, it's, you know, it's actually sometimes more because it's usually just the first one, not even the second one.
Actually, your, your four days has become gracious because a very, very long period of time was very common for three days.
Yeah.
So your four-day policy for the number of names listed are actually extensively in today's market. And I agree with Ms. Sutherland, there's, you know, depending on what it is, it may not be enough in two weeks, but we have programs for that and we utilize those if we need to. But respectfully, you do have to have some type of cutoff somewhere. So I appreciate the clerk's timeframe of putting this together and bringing it forward for us. If there's an amendment or a choice that you guys would like to pull back and reconsider, we can always put this to that position, send it back and ask it to be brought back at the next court meeting. But this is pretty commonplace for most of your operational entities.
I motion to approve the policy manual amendment regarding bereavement as recommended.
I second.
I have motioned by Treasurer Sutherland, supported by Court Gurley. May the Deputy Court please call the roll.
Sutherland.
Aye.
Gurley.
Aye.
Reader.
Aye.
Rosio.
Aye.
Marino.
Aye.
All right, moving on to item H, policy manual amendment, motor vehicle policy. Mr. Gravo.
Good evening, board. Once again, we have an additional item being brought forward for the policy amendment, motor vehicle policy, which is combination of the old motor vehicle policy and a municipal vehicle use policy. The new motor vehicle policy allows for a uniform policy for the township, the elimination of conflicting language, and the implementation of necessary language. Supervisor's office is requesting the approval of the new Lennox Township motor vehicle policy and the repeal of the old motor vehicle policy along with the municipal vehicle use I'm sorry to belabor part of this, but I will start to go through this. If you have any questions, please feel free. Use of the township vehicles. And let me qualify this. This has come forward in some of our requests that when we redid our insurance policies, the insurance company actually brought some of these items to us due to liability and risk values. So this is coming forward in those items. We have updated the township into a situation where all staff members that touch a motor vehicle effective this year will be going through an MVR policy that does an entire background check and that each department head will be notified if that person clears the MVR or not. We are limited, we are not a large township, so this does not take a lot, but those entire background checks are very extensive and each one of those is close to a hundred dollars per person. Moving forward, use of the township vehicles. The voluntary policy covers the use of township vehicles other than certain emergency vehicles under the Lennox Township Fire Department. Authorized use, township vehicles are to be driven only by authorized personnel for official township business. After-hours use, after-hours use of the township-owned vehicles require prior approval from the township board. Use is limited to commuting to and from work and no personal use of passengers except for township officials or employees. Storage restrictions, township vehicles shall not be stored in personal garages or storage units at any given time. Similar, personal vehicles may not be stored on township garages or properties and buildings. Excuse me, I misworded that. Driver health and limitations, employees with health issues or driving restrictions must inform the department head of any limitations that affect their ability to operate township vehicles. Compliance with traffic laws, all drivers and passengers must obey traffic laws, safety regulations, including wearing seat belts. Accidents, in the event of an accident, the driver must report it to the department head and file a police report immediately. Official township business, vehicles are for official township business only and should primarily be driven within township boundaries. Trips outside the township require approval from the department head. Passenger restrictions, passengers in township vehicles are limited to township employees, officials, or authorized guests. Driver responsibility, the driver responsible for the safe, courteous, and economic use of the township vehicle, including compliance with all safety protocols. Alcohol and safety restricted, excuse me, alcohol and substance restrictions, the consumption of, the consumption or transportation of alcoholic beverages in the township vehicle is strictly prohibited. Parking and security, when parking a township vehicle, remove the keys from the ignition and lock the vehicles. Lights and flashes, headlights, hazard lights, or roof flashers are necessary for visibility or safety. Upkeep and cleanliness, drivers are responsible for routine upkeep, including fueling, checking fluids, washing and vacuuming the interior. Additionally, windows must be cleaned if covered by snow or frost before driving. Vehicle maintenance, follow the vehicle's maintenance schedule and report any mechanical issues to the responsible department head. Parking locations, whenever possible, possible vehicles should be parked and covered in locations such as garages during non-working hours, subject to section A three. Use of vehicles for extended periods of time, employees may be allowed to take township vehicles home if the situation warrants with approval from the department head. If the vehicle is taken home more than once a week, the department head must seek township board approval. Any such agreement shall not extend beyond the first day of December following a general election for the township board and trustees. Trip documentation, drivers must record the vehicle's odometer reading before and after each trip, along with the name of any passengers, the date, and the reason for the trip vehicle log sheets. Reimbursement for personal use of vehicle in township business, employees may use their personal vehicles for township business. In such cases, mileage must be reported on township reporting forms. Reimbursement will be made based on prevailing IRS reimbursement guidelines. Employees must include a copy of their own auto insurance to receive reimbursement. Finally, the receiver reimbursement employees must notify the township of intended use in advance. Cell phone use, at no time, no cell phone usage or texting be allowed while in the operation of a township-owned vehicle. Motor vehicle records, employees are expected to maintain certain acceptable motor vehicle driving records, commonly known as MVRs. MVRs will be checked upon initial offer of employment and periodically throughout the term of employment. Township may use a third-party vendor to track driving activity that appears on driving records. The township will not provide any advance notice of periodic checks of the MVRs. GPS locators, all township-owned vehicles must have GPS location trackers installed and operational at all times to ensure the proper monitoring of vehicle location and utilization for the effectiveness and security purposes. The township supervisor shall be responsible for overseeing the GPS tracking system. The supervisor's office is in charge of ensuring that all vehicles are equipped with functioning operational GPS trackers and that the tracking system is monitored effectively. Access to view the location of the township vehicles will be granted at the discretion of the township supervisor, the township clerk, and the township treasurer shall have automatic access. Requests for access must be formal and cemented and will be reviewed based on operational needs and relevance. Unauthorized access of sharing of vehicle location data is strictly prohibited. Tampering with, disabling, or removing GPS trackers from any township vehicle is strictly prohibited. Any such action must be identified, excuse me, must be immediately reported to the township supervisor or the appropriate supervisory personnel. Any employee found tampering with, disabling, or removing GPS trackers without authorized permission will be subject to disciplinary action up to and including termination of employment. In cases where it is necessary to remove or service the GPS tracker, prior written authorization must be obtained from the supervisor, township supervisor. The tracker must be reinstalled and replaced promptly upon completion of the service. Previous agreements, any and all previous approved agreements regarding after-hours usage of the township vehicles shall be nullified upon the passage of this policy. That I'll bring it back to the board for any questions, comments.
If there's no, if there's no discussion, a motion would be in order.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the township, or Lennox Township motor vehicle policy as written.
I have a motion by trustee Marino, supported by trustee Rosio. May the Deputy Court please call the roll.
Marino.
Aye.
Rosio.
Aye.
Gurley.
Aye.
Sutherland.
Aye.
Reader.
Aye.
All right, moving on to item I, employee healthcare review proposal. Mr. Gravo.
Good evening, board. This evening, this is not a board action item, this is a board informational item. In front of your packet, or in your packet, you'd find two different distinctive items, one being a blue folder and one with a large volume of paperwork involved in front of it. I am giving this out to the board members so that you have the next thirty days to review, come in, give me a call, let's go through this. This is an opportunity for us to move forward, updating our staffing's options for employee healthcare. This is due, which is kind of unique for the township, but is actually due in February. Most of you all are aware or are used to, whether you work outside corporate jobs or whatever, November, December, January first, boom, you get new healthcare. Not here, it's a little different. We're trying to get things back in line where it needs to be, but there are some unique things. We did send this out to three different agencies and we actually had one agency pull away from us and say that we were too small. So if that indicates to you some of the costs that are involved, it took an extensive amount of time for our staff to put together the information. Many of you had been questioned for your information so that they could go back and get the proper rates and numbers to the items that are offered. There are a number of things that we are looking forward to doing. One of the key elements that we're excited about bringing forward with both of these entities that have brought forward is a very low-cost option for us to provide an increased death benefit. Now, I'm not excited about that, but I am excited because that does allow us to give our staff's family an increased opportunity if something, God forbid, would happen while they're employed with us, that they are left with something to take care of those bills that we all tend to have or the families have. With that being said, that's also something that we're looking to enhance for our fire department EMS response, or excuse me, fire department and our overall staff here within the township. So it's been a long time coming, but I think the numbers will be very well worth us having the board look at, an opportunity to provide some type of employee death benefit specifically in addition to something new our first responders at the department. But with that being said, those packets are available for you to review, take a look. One of the most important things is that this will also allow our staff to go online and electronically handle their own systems. We'll have one person here that.
We'll have one person here that will interact, but ninety percent of your stuff will be handled by yourself, but we will have interactivity capabilities. With that, I'll take it back and allow any questions. Feel free or reach out, and I'll be more than happy to go through the books or go through and get the people in here so that you guys can have questions or comments or reach out And that is all for the informational piece of that for the employee's staff.
All right, thank you. We'll be moving on to item J, Township Interior Door Proposal Quotes, Mr. Grabo.
All right. Good evening, this is a request that has come back now. There was a request for us to go out and get proposals and quotes for interior doors to be set as we had spoken in the last meeting. We went out, there was three bids, they came back in. You'll see in front of you, we have a collective bid. The last bid was sent in at the last minute. This evening, you'll see three different numbers, Signature Builders being the low price at seventy-six-hundred of a full removal and restore. Windstar Contract was at ninety-eight-hundred, which did not include restoration, it just replacement. So they weren't painting the walls, they weren't replacing the drywall, they were cutting doors in and setting it. Any additional painting, drywall was going to be additional cost, even though they were asked. And then the last one was eleven-thousand-two-hundred, which was also set there, information with miscellaneous fasteners and a number of items that they were adding on. At this point in time, if the township board approves it and they decide to move forward with this, the recommendation is to move forward with Signature Builders at seventy-six-hundred dollars, full R and R. Signature Builders is one of the main contractors that did the senior development or the senior community center, and we all see how well that turned out. So the recommendation at this point in time is to move forward with Signature Builders if those, that two departments move forward with the desire to have those doors installed.
I've got some, a lot of questions on this project. First off, what exactly was the criteria for the quoting of this, of this bid? I mean, were they, were they all the same?
Criteria was set out, each one of them was brought out and walked through and showing the exact doors, the exact windows that wanted to be put into the walls.
I'm getting into the picture of what happened, and this is why I'm asking all these questions. This is a door that we're going to be putting into your guys' offices, and I believe we all agree that this is something that we should have, but we should probably do it I'm not familiar with what full R and R is, I always thought R and R was rest and recreation, but at any rate, I still don't see any of the criteria that needs to be followed. The most extensive bid, to me, looks like it was done by FJF Doors. Here's a few things, though, that FJF Doors has left out of their bid. First off, when you take that wall down, there's going to be a void on the floor where the door is, okay? That was, that was not addressed or forwarded. The painting, I don't see on either of these.
Mr. Moreno, and just so you know, as I'm looking at this, I am not seeing the two attachments that go with this. I know that we have those, and your questions that, like the voided carpet, the painting, I know for a fact, and I'm just kind of looking in my packet right now, those were items that were in fact addressed, I'd be more than happy to give you the copies that I have.
I would want to see those, yes, absolutely, because that's not the only thing. Naturally, these are your offices of the clerk and the office of the treasurer. We're going to put two windows next to these doors, okay? These offices often handle sensitive documents as well as classified documents. Window treatments for those windows would probably be in order, and I don't see that quote on here. Another portion of this is a structural header above the door. I don't see that, and this is a fairly large opening, it's a six-foot opening, okay? There really does need to be a header over that door, okay? There also isn't a light switch next to the door, okay? So I'm getting the idea of what happened is, there's no set print for this so that everybody could be bidding on the same thing. There's no drawings on this, am I correct?
There's no drawings.
We just got pointed at the wall and said, I want a door there and a door there.
No, what was done was each one of them was brought in, clearly identified, we want this exact set moved here and here into those two positions. The items that were addressed were in fact, in case there was any electrical issues of movement, the window, or excuse me, none of the buildings, or none of the doors within the building have separate window treatments, so that was not an issue that we brought up.
Was the township engineer even consulted on any of this?
No.
Yeah, he should have been.
The township engineer wouldn't be involved in the actual interior of the building. What you're looking for is the township building official.
The township actually, I'm looking for an architect to design. The header that needs going in over the door is going to be specific for that door opening, has to be designed in there.
But again, to your point, the township engineer would not have been involved in that.
Okay, well, then, did we get an architect to design this for us? Yes, that is correct. Usually, an architect would put the specs together for bidding. Right, and I'm sure the architect would have included a light switch, would have made sure that the door, the flooring was taken care of. And I'm assuming that there's a complete set of prints for this building, if I'm not Putting these prints for this door with the prints for the building would probably be advisable. So I think what we did is we put the cart just a little bit before the horse here. And I believe that we need to design this out a little bit better, okay? It makes no mention of what could be in the walls, okay? But the original prints of the building will tell you within ninety-five percent of what is in those walls.
If I can interrupt, I was here for all the quotes, and they actually got up on ladders and looked in the ceilings to see what was in between the walls and how the doors would go in and what would be in the way, and there isn't anything in the way because it's an actually open space with. I'm just saying, they got up and looked in, and looked up in the ceiling, looked up down into the walls, and that's how they based their quotes on what would have to be done.
Do the doors open into the hallway, do the doors open into the offices?
The doors would have to open into the, into the offices, it would not be a good thing to have them open up into the hallways.
Do they swing on the right or do they swing on the left?
The right.
Right.
What I'm getting is, an architect would have had this all laid out on a plan so that when you take this plan to the contractor who's going to bid it, everybody's bidding on the same thing.
Mr. Moreno, would you like us to take this back to an architect and have it done, and how much will you allow the township to spend on an architect to draw this and bring it back to the board? An architect for an interior design is going to be somewhere around twenty to twenty-five thousand. We'll need a motion and an adjournment with a delay for the board on that. These are steel-cased doors, steel-cased frames that are built specifically for the interior. There is no headers from the structure, if you look at the structures that are within the walls now. So we just need an authorization, if you'd like to move forward to have an architect do the drawings, the board's going to have to authorize an architect fee.
Okay, what I would suggest is that we table this and we consult with possibly our engineer or our planner to put us on the right track, because I don't see this being on the right track right now. I mean, these are very large openings that are going in, in there, they're six-foot Personally, I would like to table this, and so we consult with the township engineer on it.
I think as previously stated from both myself and the township engineer, he has nothing to do with this at all. As stated, you're an architect.
Okay.
We don't have one on staff.
Okay, but do you think that we should, we would need one? Do we need one for this? I, I don't see our building official here to say, the way these have been designed right now, are they going to pass a vote? I, I do not see a light switch on there for any of these. I'm sure it's code to have a light switch near the door. I mean, this is something you would want to have.
Your light switches are already within those offices, trustee Moreno. They're automatically, they are light-censored switches.
Okay, there's always a switch right next to the door. It's always there.
Correct, when a building is built, that's where the lights are censored and put into place.
Right.
If there's additional requirements, and it shows them, like I said, I'd be more than happy to show you the other two, how it did not get attached, I apologize, I'm not real sure, but I will tell you, having an architect come in and do the drawings on this building to do the attachments is going to be costly. I just, in order to let the board know that, and not saying that it's outlying, but there is going to be a fee schedule for that, and it's going to outweigh the cost of the doors. And these are steel-cased doors that are identical to the doors to the offices. If you'd like to table it, you're more than welcome to make that recommendation and move it to the vote. And I understand your concerns, but I think you'll see on the other two quotes that it is very clear and evident of what they put forward on the R and R, which is removal and replacement.
I also didn't see any locks for those doors. Now, I'm assuming that there are badge locks on your current doors right now in the treasurer's office and the other, you just, you unlock your door with your badge?
Yeah, but you also have to lock it, the handle has to be locked.
Okay, but you would want that, you would want that same lock mechanism on the new board?
Yeah.
Okay. And I don't see that in these quotes, okay?
That's because the...
Attachment is the same?
No, the card reader system is done by our IT company, High Tech. Excuse me.
Okay.
Excuse, excuse me, you said you don't see that?
Pardon me?
You said you do not see that?
It's not on any of these quotes, no.
It's on this quote.
I, that's a quote I don't have, I have...
Take a look at the back of the page.
I am, I'm looking at a lever lock system.
There you go, lever lock assembly.
It makes no mention of electronic badges.
You're talking about a lever lock assembly. The electronic badges is an in-house item that has nothing to do with the actual door assembly. Those would not be included in the door installs. Badging systems and control systems are completely different than the doors themselves.
Okay, when you swipe your badge, does it unlock the door?
Yes, it's two different systems.
Then there has to be electricity in the door.
No, there's not electricity in the door, sir, it's electricity in the wall that comes through the small system that releases the actual pins.
Whichever it is, it's not mentioned on any of these.
But they're not part of that, that's what I'm trying to explain to you. The badging system is not part of putting doors in.
To put these doors in, the finished product is not here, is what I'm, is what I'm getting at.
If they want the doors badged, that would be an additional review from a different company. Each company that puts these doors in has nothing to do with the electronic badging. Whatsoever.
That's why I'm saying, I think this, this has not been planned out.
But I will just respectfully tell you, you will get a separate bid from our IT people who does that, this does not have anything to do with the doors, the physical doors do not have that type of piece into it, no different than when did the community senior center, those doors were completely different than the badging systems. So their pins and their locks at the lock assemblies are there. If you want a badge swipe, that is a separate animal, that would not be part of this bid, it would be an additional bid.
Well, I would think that you would want that.
And you would move forward on that, that's correct. This is strictly to put the doors in. Updating IT security was not part of this.
Okay. Like I say, I find this very, very incomplete, and being that I don't have the other two quotes in front of me, I'd like to table this.
Is that a motion?
I'd make a motion to table it, yes.
Is there a second on the motion? Going once, going twice, motion is declared dead.
I would like to make a motion that we approve the quote for the Signature Builders to install interior doors into the clerk's office and the treasurer's office for the total amount of seven-thousand-six-hundred, as detailed, with the exception that High Tech will have to put security tags on.
Is there a second on the motion? There is a motion made by Court Gurley, supported by the treasurer, Sutherland, may the deputy court please call the roll?
Gurley?
Aye.
Sutherland?
Aye.
Rosio?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Moreno?
No.
All right, moving on to item K, this is just to set the community development block grant, CWG funds public period. I will make the motion to set the CWG public period from Monday, February 3rd, 2025, at
I second.
I have a motion from the chair, supported by Court Gurley, may the deputy court please call the roll? May the Deputy Court, please call the roll.
Reader?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Sutherland?
Aye.
Moreno?
Aye.
Rosio?
Aye.
All right, moving on to item L. 2025 Michigan Township Association MTA Conference Request. May the Court?
It is that time to start considering the MTA conference and this year it is held in Grand Rapids and the early registration is coming up for anybody that wants to attend. So I am recommending that anybody that wants to attend should go. It's a three-day training and there's different classes each day that each representative can choose. So I would like to make a motion to approve the Board of Trustees as well as the Township Planner to attend the Michigan Township Association Conference from March 31st through Thursday, April 3rd in Grand Rapids.
What about the Township Engineer, who usually comes with us in the Township Attorney?
Okay. And the Township Attorney and the Township Engineer. Sorry.
That's okay.
I second that.
I have a motion by Court Gurley, seconded by Treasurer Sutherland. May the Deputy Court, please call the roll.
Gurley?
Aye.
Sutherland?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Rosio?
Aye.
Moreno?
Aye.
All right, moving on to item S. Township Vehicle Steel Bid Awards. May the Court?
Okay, we had placed an announcement about the 2020, or sorry, the 20... The 2020-12 Ford Escape as is, the bids were received, sealed until after 5:00 PM on December 19th. Myself and the Treasurer, Ms. Sutherland, opened them up and we had a total of five that came in. The highest bidder was Kyle Dupius with the amount of five-thousand-six-hundred-and-fifty dollars. And I am making a motion that we approve his bid as the highest bidder for the township-owned 2020, or sorry, 2012 Ford Escape as, and as in condition for the total of five-thousand-six-hundred-and-fifty dollars.
I'd like to ask that we make sure the DCL, Township DCL is reading for the bid. And also if it doesn't have a GPS tracker.
Yep, that would have to be read first. I'll support that motion. I have a motion by the Court, supported by the Chair. May the Deputy Court, please call the roll.
Gurley?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Moreno?
Aye.
Rosio?
Aye.
Sutherland?
Aye.
All right, moving on to item N. Court Office Extension Request. May the Court?
I would like to request an extension on the approval to have the former Clerk, Luanne Kendall, assist in any future support to the clerk's office that they may need on an on-call basis only and as needed until further training is complete. There has been with us being closed for the holidays and with her schedule at the senior center, there's a couple of things that may come up in the next couple of weeks that, and in the near future, that I myself have not been trained on yet and I would request that she helps me on that.
If there's no discussion, a motion would be in order.
I make a motion to approve the extension of Luanne Kendall to assist the clerk's office as needed on an on-call basis only until training is complete.
I have a motion by Court Gurley, supported by Trustee Rosio. May the Deputy Court, please call the roll.
Gurley?
Aye.
Rosio?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Sutherland?
Aye.
Moreno?
Aye.
All right. Moving on to public comment. Going once? All right, moving on to call from the Board. All right, adjourned.
I'll make a motion there. We adjourn at... What time is it?
7:48.
7:48.
I have a motion by Trustee Moreno, supported by Trustee Rosio. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Hearing none? We are adjourned.